We are ready to go?
Well, so here's the thing. It's gonna be...
Call the meeting to order and stamp for pledge. Pledge is done in the honors.
A pledge leaves.
A pledge leaves to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make, take a moment of thanks for bringing our astronauts home. I was waiting for them to get out of the capsule and they would take too long. Okay, thank you. We're all waiting.
Wow, you alright?
Yeah.
Oh, here. You must hit the button on the side.
Man down for shorter beer.
Real short beer.
That was almost Trump.
Okay. We have, the public hearing is open at this point, right?
No, this is the first public hearing you're having.
Huh?
This is the first public hearing you're having.
Okay. We have a public hearing open for ZBA applications, ZB 25001 Chick-fil-A, 18 Westage. Any area variances or all the variances are listed here in the...
Mr. Chairman, you need a motion to open that public hearing.
Okay, I have a motion open.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Gentlemen, you have the floor.
Excuse me, Ron, just to say, did you want to appoint a fifth number? We only have four.
I think it's necessary.
Well, my personal opinion, they come every month.
Okay.
You know, if there's an open spot, I'll appoint them.
I will, alright. I'd like to appoint Johnny Khan as the, if we can. Johnny Khan is the full member today.
You want to raise your hand, Chris? Yes.
Okay, alright. Okay, I'm sorry, sir, go ahead.
No problem. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Charles Gottlieb from the law firm of White Men Osterman &amp; Hanna, land use counsel for Chick-fil-A. Here this evening with our project engineer, Chris Boyer, from Bowler Engineering. We will also be joined in a little bit by John Martinez, who is a development lead at Chick-fil-A. Here this evening for a public hearing for a 5,198 square foot Chick-fil-A restaurant at 18 Westage Drive, which is the site of the Hudson Town Center. The location that you see up on the screen is a vacant and blighted Boston market that is not being used certainly to its fullest extent. Access to the project site, as you'll see here, will be modified to what exists today to be a little bit further back on West Merritt Boulevard. This will have a dual lane drive-through. We'll get into that change that we made to the site plan based on comments from this board. We appeared before the planning board last week, I believe. Yep, last week, time flies. And we had a public hearing. We obtained planning board comments, comments from members of the public. We spoke with a few members of the public that own the wine and liquor store within the town center, and I believe they're here this evening as well. We will be responding to all those planning board public comments and making the needed changes, and we'll do the same for this board based on comments we hear this evening. The planning board is gearing up to potentially adopt a secret negative declaration as they are the lead agency at their April meeting. This board can't act on the requested area variances until that neg deck is in place, so we certainly still have time to work through some comments or concerns this board might have. We submitted a revised site plan sheet with a rendering that you see up on the screen there in the beginning of this month. Happy to report that we were able to accommodate some of the questions and concerns we heard from the ZBA members, which decreased a lot of variances and which we believe also eliminated the impervious surface variance request. So the changes, and Chris will get into kind of the full site plan presentation for members of the public. We removed that third drive-through bypass lane, which I think was a great change. Still able to accommodate 44 cars in the drive-through stack. This brought back 1,200 square feet of green space on the project site, which is now a significant reduction in impervious surfaces from what exists today. We extended sidewalks along West Merritt Boulevard. We revised the crosswalk connection from the project site to the plaza itself. We did hear members of the public concerned that our prior location brought the pedestrians kind of right to the dumpster and delivery area, and certainly that wasn't our intent. We added a curved island in the parking lot to facilitate pedestrian safety for those walkers coming from Route 9, and included some trees in the parking lot itself. You'll see in the middle there, which resulted in a loss of two parking spaces, but makes the parking lot a little greener. Some of the other planning board comments that we received, that we're responding to that we'll note, were related to how to control internal traffic. You know, potentially on this site, you could have customers coming from three different access points. One of the concerns was we want to make sure no one's cutting through vacant parking spaces and disobeying the drive aisles, so we're working through some signage and some ideas there. The changes that you see that I just described have reduced some variances and eliminated one. The front yard setback for the ordering canopy that's adjacent West Merritt Boulevard, we needed two front yard setbacks for that one. One from the center line of West Merritt Boulevard and one from that property line. We've reduced that variance request by 13 feet by taking away that third drive-through line. Again, that ordering canopy is needed for efficient drive-through process. Chick-fil-A kind of has a state-of-the-art drive-through process where there's no more two lanes merging into one, which kind of bottlenecks the drive-through. There's also no delivery window where you pick up your food. So team members are underneath the canopy taking your orders on a tablet. You then proceed through the drive-through and then team members will deliver your food through a door that they come out of underneath the other attached canopy that you see. As I mentioned, we increased the green space on the project site. So overall, for the project site, you're permitted 70% impervious surface. The existing limits of disturbance that you see up there was at 77% impervious surface. We now propose 71.3% impervious surface within the limits of disturbance. So we argue that that eliminates that variance request because we are improving an existing impervious surface condition on the site. Am I too close to this?
I don't speak right now.
The drive-through location, there's a requirement that the access to the drive-through has to comply with the front yard setbacks. Route 9 is also a front yard here. So again, with getting rid of that third drive aisle, we were able to reduce those two variance requests by approximately 23 feet. So those are some good improvements to note. Related to signage, we realized that the wall signs were measured incorrectly, so we went to a two-box method of calculating signage, which I now know what a two-box method of calculating signage is. Essentially, it's not counting for the dead space when we have our Chick-fil-A lettering. So that's a reduction of 67 square feet of signage in the variance request. We also provided a picture of the current monument sign that is located to the south of the entire project site. And, you know, we'll get into the signage and certainly answer any questions, but one of the main objectives of signage is to make sure that access to the site is appropriate and that we're not just funneling all customers into one access point. So you really want to make sure that the building is visible from all access points. So we are proposing a freestanding sign on this project site, five wall signs. As you can see, this project site is going to be seen from Route 9, West Merritt Boulevard, access points to the south, as well as, I'm getting a little turned around here, from the west for those coming kind of up through the Dunkin' Donuts access point. So to mitigate the planning board's concern over internal access, confused drivers kind of looking where to go, signage is vital and a key component to that. Again, we have a unique property. It's essentially islanded by roads. There is a Chipotle and Five Guys on the south end of this site. They have an aggregate of six wall signs, and they're very close to that existing freestanding sign there that we put a picture in our submission of. We're also kind of in an odd predicament here because we are subject to the shopping center sign regulations in this PSC zoning district where the variances would be significantly less if those shopping center or mall, for lack of better words, sign regulations weren't applied to us. We're essentially a freestanding business operation on a mall site. So those are justifications for the sign variances. With that said, I'll hand it over to Chris to more intricately walk you and the members of the public through the site plan. Thank you.
Okay, good evening. For the record, my name's Chris Boyer. I'm with Bowler Engineering, and I think I'm going to be pretty brief because Charlie just did a great job talking about the site in general. Couple things I just want to point out for the public hearing, as I know there might be people watching remotely, is that we did, and I'm not sure if the laser pointer's going to work here on this one, but yep, this green area right here is where we picked up a lot of the additional green space. That was concrete, so all this was concrete before, and now it's green. So not only did it help us...
Where are you pointing? I can't see you.
It's tough to see. Let me, it comes straight down, right here. I'm not sure if you could...
Oh, yeah.
Maybe from that angle, it might be tough to see that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I got you.
You can't see that once it gets on the screen.
Right.
I can see it from here. Yeah, this green area here. There you go. I like that.
I can see that.
There you go.
Thank you.
So not only did that get rid of the variance that we need for green space, but as you can see, the location of the green space is prominent, right? It's right along a heavily traveled intersection. So it's going to be noticed that there's more green there than there is today. And then the other thing I just wanted to point out for everybody in the public as well is that we are moving that entrance. And I know we talked briefly about this before, but it's a very big part of this project. And so today, that entrance to the mall is here, and we're moving that entrance further away from the intersection to here. So it's a very costly thing to do, to move an entrance. We have to stripe a turn lane out into West Merritt, but we all know it's going to function a lot better because of the stacking and the things that happen there. And as Charlie just mentioned, when we do look at access, it was important to the planning board. They feel Chick-fil-A is going to be well-received here in the town, and we think it's going to do well as well. And traffic could be coming from different parts, different areas, right? So we know that traffic is going to be heading page south here, and we want to capture them with signage. We know that east-west here, traffic's going to be coming, and then we know that traffic's coming in this direction, too. So we've got that. That would be a typical intersection, right? That would be a typical corner lot. But we also have traffic coming from here, right? So we know that internal traffic is going to be coming in this direction here, and that is the ring road from the old, you know, mall that was there that facilitates people for traveling around. And we also know that traffic is going to be coming from here, right? Because there is a traffic light that is up in this corner over here, and it facilitates traffic to come in from here. So a typical intersection, you'd have those east-west, north-south, right? We have those four, but we have five, six. We have a lot of different approaches to this building, and we want to encourage those approaches, right? So the more access points we can get for people to get comfortable with distributes traffic and makes for redundancy, which is a benefit altogether. So having those signs to clearly identify the building on all spots is really helpful, and we were able to reduce those a little bit from the initial presentation. So with that, I will turn it back to the board and the public. Take any comments that you may have, and we look forward to discussing it further.
Okay, thank you. Johnny, I'll start with you. Any comments?
No, no. I am quite familiar with Bowler Engineering, and they've done a, you know, fantastic job of...
No comments on signage or the block plan?
No, no, I think everything, like you said, it's just a comfort level for the commodity that's coming there. Yeah, no, it puts good use, it'll eliminate a lot of things. Signage, listen, you know, when needed, we give it if it contributes to, you know, the betterment, so.
Ann?
I do, actually. And so the first one, and I'm not sure if this is maybe a question for you instead, so it regards the impermeable surface. And thank you, and I did notice at the planning board when you were going through everything, there was really, that's a significant change, the added trees, so thank you for really taking that concern seriously. So my question is more of a procedural thing. So if the code is 70%, and even though it's, what is it, 75% now?
Seventy-seven.
What's existing now, it's 77%, and you're improving that, so I appreciate that. But my question is, even though it's still above the 70%, does that still require a variance?
You know, I haven't talked to Joel to see what Joel's thoughts on it are. I saw the applicant's submittal on that. I mean, you know, their point is a fair one to say, you know, and they quoted the section of the code to say, you know, if you're improving conditions, you don't need a variance for that.
Right.
My first gut is to say I agree with that.
Mm-hmm.
And I'd have to look into it further and see what Joel has to say and how he's interpreted the code in that respect in the past, but that's, my gut is that the applicant's correct on that.
Okay. That was just more a question of curiosity.
And I'll just add to that, you know, it's, when you have a site like this that's so large with so many uses and it's changed throughout the decades...
Yeah.
It's kind of hard to calculate all the impervious surfaces around site. So if we make two assumptions, one, if we assume the entire site is 70% right now and it meets the code, you know, which you would hope, then the fact that we're reducing on our project site brings us down even further. Another assumption you could make is that currently it's a non-conforming condition in some respect, and your code allows you to improve a non-conformity without the need for a variance. So under both assumptions, a variance still wouldn't be needed, but I agree Joel is certainly the one to ask.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that, and again, I appreciate the fact that it's an improvement, so. And I did, I just want to mention, I do have questions, even though, again, the setbacks have been reduced, I am curious about just looking at the green space, and it looks like maybe it's shrubbery that's going to be going in along Route 9 instead of trees. Is there, is there any... And again, it looks like your space is the green, and there's still trees existing? Am I just kind of seeing that, like, but it's not your, that would be the state property around the sidewalk, because there are a few trees? Am I looking at that properly?
Yeah, I think you've got a good handle on it, yes.
Okay.
So I'll try to use the cursor. I love this big cursor. It's not very accurate. I feel like I'm in kindergarten with the big crayon.
Uh-huh. Yes, okay, that's what I was looking at.
That is a big tree right there...
Yeah.
That you see. Same with this other shadow that's down here.
Yeah.
So those street trees are going to remain.
Okay.
And what we're proposing, as you had noted, is a lot of landscaping up front, but it is lower level in nature.
Right.
And the purpose of that is to help shield headlights as they may go through the parking lot, but then you can see over it, right? So you have the street trees, and then you've got something lower that's there, and that's the intent. As far as internal trees, we've added those, too.
Yes.
So we've got some red maple that had been added here, as well as a honey locust, and I think there was one other, it's skipping my mind, but they're trees that will flourish here in the town.
That was it for me. Thank you.
Yeah.
I do appreciate the changes that were made. Those obvious flaws to the original design, especially how it interacts with the existing shopping center, so I do appreciate that. I do, I'm at that shopping center frequently, and I do see the flow of the traffic and the flow of the pedestrians. I do know that there's a lot of pedestrians from the hotels that don't take their cars, or if they even have their cars there, and use that shopping center and the restaurants and the shops there. So they will be walking around, and it seems that they have space to walk around now. My only thing is a question on the signs and just the amount of them, and I get the ones on the building, I can understand that. It just seems that that whole entire shopping center, and it's perhaps the landlord's issue, but the signage for all the shops in the shopping center are underrepresented for what's in the shopping center, and there's even signs still up for businesses that I don't even recall being there, and I've been living here for 17 years. So it just seems like there's a bigger issue at play with the necessity of the signs, so.
And you're talking about signage that's on the existing mall building itself?
There's like a big sign that...
The monument sign?
Rises up pretty high, and on that, there's, I don't even think Five Guys and Chipotle are represented on that sign, if I'm correct. And again, there's like restaurants, I don't even recall being there, so I think there's a little bit of an issue at play there, so that would be my...
We can certainly share that with the property owner.
Johnny?
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for picking this site. You know, the way it looks now, it's, you had a broken-down Boston Market building, a broken-down parking lot. I think it's a nice improvement. I appreciate what you guys have done with the impervious space, adding more green area. I think that was important, reducing the setbacks the way you did. I mean, I sat through the whole planning board meeting and kind of watched, so I kind of really got a good idea of what you've done, and I just want to say I appreciate all of that. I've been down to the site a few times, and in regards to signage, I have a couple of questions. Number one, the big tall green shopping center sign, that's, I guess, considered a monument sign, correct?
Yeah, that's the...
Is that going to be one of your signs? One of your monument signs that you're talking about?
So the one that's on the south end?
Yes.
No, so I believe, Chris, is it right here for the monument sign? Do you want, where our freestanding sign will be?
That's correct.
So...
Because you're looking for...
I'll take my hand with the cursor here now.
Two monument signs, if I'm correct, right, that you're looking for?
We are, let me just confirm, so we have accurate information. Just one monument sign.
So the property, the property has one today, the one that you referenced.
The big tall green one, right?
Big tall one, so that's one.
Right.
And then we're proposing our own Chick-fil-A monument sign, so the property then would have two.
Okay, so in other words, you're not looking to add two plus the green sign that's already there?
Yeah.
Okay. And then what else? I had one other question up. As far as your outside signage, you're looking right now for basically on four sides of your building to have signage, correct?
That's correct. So it would be a Chick-fil-A signage on each elevation, and then on the front elevation to distinguish where the front door will be, there's a welcome friends and neighborhood sign.
The welcome friends, I saw, yes. In keeping with the character of the neighborhood, kind of like they say with, you know, variances and such, I was down there, I was kind of looking at the different buildings. Chipotle and Five Guys, they essentially have two signs each, three sides of their Dunkin' Donuts has, I believe, four signs on their building. Three on one side, one on the north side. You know, signage is a big thing in this town. I would almost be willing to accept if you could keep with the character of the neighborhood with maybe three signs on your building, you know? From what I saw at the Chipotle and Five Guys, it looked like they did not have signage on the, I think it was the southern exposure?
South side, right. Yeah, yep.
Correct.
Correct, right?
Yep.
Yeah, there's one each on the east side, one each on the west side, and one each on the south side, so there's no signage on the north side of that building. Kind of, you've got your, you're looking at your monument sign potentially. You have, if you went with three signs, it might, you know, it might help alleviate the variance a little bit and make it a little more acceptable to the board, the public, what have you. Just a suggestion.
Sure. And, you know, as I mentioned, we'll respond to these comments in our next submission, and we'll take note of the feasibility of that. Again, this is a tough site for signage, given its location.
It is.
I think we documented in our first submission that the Five Guys and the Chipotle building has six wall signs. Granted, that's for two tenants.
Two tenants, one for each or three for each?
Yep, and we're a single-tenant use, so that differentiates a little bit, but we'll take a closer look at the community around us and, you know, see if something's feasible.
Yeah, if you think that maybe, you know, you could live without one of those even, you know, it's just kind of going in the right direction, you know?
Understood.
Can you pull up the sign? There's two pictures, actually, of this, the monument signs on the site. One looks empty, and that might be what you're talking about, is it's kind of under...
That's the one I'm talking about.
So, yeah, this is the...
I think, Kathy, you referred to the movie theater sign that's empty?
No, not the movie theater sign. It says like 18 North on it, on a big circle, and then it's all green.
Yeah, that's a shot.
And nobody else really has a monument sign on Route 9 at all, and there's a number of businesses that...
This one here is empty, totally. That's the one you're talking about, right?
When you say the monument sign, because somebody, was it you that asked, or Tim? Maybe you said about the monument sign? So you want another monument sign on the south end and then a monument sign on the north end where the restaurant is?
No, just one where our access point would be...
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's roughly nine in the middle of the mall, in that area.
Right here, right where that box is.
Okay, all right, that's what I thought, all right.
So, you know, we are bringing that access point back, and so that, you're going to have some confused drivers, and I think that's going to be a major, that's going to be a major point of, you know, bringing people into that access point.
Point that out again?
It's right at the top of the cross.
The red box.
Where the white box is.
I do think we also need to be careful, though, because there's a number of other businesses coming in, like a Planet Hollywood and an Aldi and everything else, and we have to watch the concessions we make now for the concessions that are going to be asked going forward.
What are you talking about, here, this one? And are you planning on putting one on that big green monument sign as well?
That I don't know. John, do you know? No.
You're not?
No.
Okay, so you're only really looking at having one monument sign then?
Correct.
Okay.
At the top of the cursor.
Top of the cursor, yes.
Yes. All right, that's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
So that's been modified.
What's that?
That was modified because the original proposal was at the corner of Merritt and Route 9.
Yeah, now they're talking about... Did you move that monument sign from the original submission?
I don't, we moved it, no.
Because the original submission has that monument sign in the corner of Merritt and Route 9.
That's correct.
That's what I thought, too.
I think that's going to just be like a transformer or something.
To the property.
What is the blue box? Is that maybe one of the signs as well?
You might not refer to it.
Blue box.
Yeah, so if you, right on, along Route 9, in the green space, in the shrubbery, yeah.
I think that might, and I'll leave it to Chris, but I think that might be the transformer that he's talking about, but we will confirm that.
Okay.
Yeah, you're saying right about there where that cursor is now, right?
Right at the top of the cursor. See, I can zoom in a little.
I think I misled Charlie when he says, "Is that the sign?", I said, "Yes." But again, we're dealing with a big fat crayon.
Oh, I don't...
And I guess...
Lucky you have a computer, by the way.
All right, thank you. Thank you. And I didn't take too much of a look, so. This box up here that we were pointing to before is an electric transformer. The monument sign is right here.
Oh, okay. So what is that, Ron?
Is right there.
So this is correct.
That is correct, yeah.
It's correct.
He was just pointing at the wrong place.
I looked quick at the big crayon.
Where there's nothing showing, okay.
I think I might have changed the location.
So that's not demonstrated up here, like there's not a little...
It's hard to see, the green color shaded all over.
See if I can zoom in here.
Okay, Doug, Doug's has the floor now?
Yep.
Okay, since there's not a lot of meat left, you know, they leave me, five, six people running around. I'm not going to try and...
I'm not going to try and repeat myself. I think that everything you did was great, that the changes you made are great. Little issue with the signage, but as far as I'm concerned, I didn't know we had a Five Guys in town until about a month ago.
There you go.
Because the signage is pretty tough back there. It's tough going back there. That's why a lot of businesses don't survive. I think this will. I think this will be a great addition to our community.
Well, I will say, I was, I worked this afternoon from the Starbucks across the street, and it does really sit low. The mall sits low, and it is hard to see even from the Starbucks parking lot, and so that kind of shocked me. And I'll also just add this little anecdote. I was just at the diner down the street, having dinner. I worked all over the place today. And I heard a lot of the employees at the diner talk about how there's a Chick-fil-A coming to town. They were excited about it. They wanted to see if they could pick up extra shifts at the Chick-fil-A, and that kind of warmed my heart a little bit, so.
I think even the Chase back there in Starbucks has a little tough time looking.
Yeah.
To make a right on Merritt and make a left into the lot, the hotel, it's confusing back there, too.
Yeah.
But that's just the way it's designed, there's not a lot we can do about that.
So, we'll open the floor to the public, if that's your-
Well, I have a couple of comments.
Oh, sure, yes.
I am not going to let you off the hook here.
All right.
All right? I have a lot of serious concerns about the signs. I do appreciate the effort you made in modifying the plan as far as that third lane, adding trees to the parking lot and so forth. And I do appreciate that, and, you know. But the signs, I mentioned in the last meeting that we were going to discuss in detail in this meeting, because I have some serious concerns about the signs. The monument sign on the corner of Route nine and Merritt, I don't know if that, I don't think that's necessary, if the building is right there and you have Chick-fil-A right on the building. So, I don't, I don't understand the necessity of that. Okay? And going back to what the county had mentioned about the sign on the, facing Merritt on the side of the building, that's redundant, because it's, you'll be able to see two signs. Okay? Now, I'm not sure if you need a sign in the back of the building, because everybody's going to be passing the building and know it's there. You know? So, those are the, my primary concerns. Now, I understand what you're saying about, you know, within the plaza itself. Now, right now, we, there are directional signs within the plaza, building two hundred, six hundred, so on. I don't understand why we, you can't have Chick-fil-A sign, a directional sign for Chick-fil-A with an arrow, and have them throughout the plaza, as opposed to having all these signs all over the place. What we're looking at here is sign pollution, and we want to cut down on that. But I think with these directional signs, now you don't, you're taking a lot of that off the table, because now you don't have to come to the zoning board for directional signs, you know? And you're still getting, still telling people where Chick-fil-A is. So, I think you're, you know, that's going to address some of those concerns, most of those concerns.
Okay, and one of the things, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, that we're doing for the planning board is some sort of diagram of directional signage in the parking lot. So, we'll revisit that, this issue, while we're also investigating that.
That's what I would propose, I would hope that you would come back with personally.
Where the landlord-
I'm sorry?
The landlord has to do better, to have representing the businesses in the plaza itself, and not have out-of-date businesses.
You know, and then, the sign facing eighty-four, the chicken head. That's the lack of a better term. I don't see a problem with that personally, you know? Because when you're coming in that entrance, the southern entrance, you're going to see the chicken head, so you're going to notice Chick-fil-A's over there, you know?
That's the southern exposure you're talking about, Ron?
Yeah, yeah. And there will be a monument sign, and I know that they're looking at modifying that monument sign. I don't know if you're familiar with the Fishkill, the ShopRite, Fishkill? They have a monument sign there, and they have the businesses rotating on that. I believe that he's going to, he's trying to get something like that here. So, that, I mean, that's, those are my concerns.
Okay.
Okay. So, I would like you to see, give that some thought.
Sure, understood. You know, we, like I said, we'll go back, we'll regroup with the team and see what's feasible. You know, we always, when talking about signage, consult our traffic engineer, because there is a certain safety element to it. So, we'll regroup as an internal team in response to these comments.
Because if, the question I have, if you don't agree with that, I'm going to ask, well, why are the directional signs there now? You understand what I'm saying?
For the other uses?
In the plaza now, yeah. So, okay.
You're saying there are directional signs in a plaza now?
Yeah. Drive through there, and I don't know what building two hundred is, six hundred. That's what I mean by directional-
In that area right in there is not.
No, no, we have directional signs throughout the plaza.
Right. Read it open up to the public, to see if there's any comments?
Those are my comments, so. Anybody in the public have anything to say? Should I read this? Okay.
If somebody's going to speak.
We have somebody's going to speak up. Before you speak up, speakers are asked to come to the podium, identify themselves, state your name. Okay, verbal interruptions or outbursts will not be tolerated. One turn at the microphone, well, you're the only one here. Let's see.
Does that mean I get multiple turns?
I don't think we have to go through all these other things, but go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Paige. I own the wine shop, actually, right on what is the only shop on the northeast corner of this property. So, I, you know, I just want to say that we're excited to have Chick-fil-A joining us. We're excited to have you guys in, we're excited to have that Southern hospitality from Atlanta, Georgia, coming in to our local town, because nothing like a little bit of Southern hospitality. So, excited about this. But we do have some concerns as a small local business, and I know we're small, but we do have a few things. I did some math, so I want to go over the math so that maybe you guys can walk me through a few things, because I'm a little confused on a couple of things. So, math. So, I've looked up what Chick-fil-A, who Chick-fil-A is and their background. So, they have non-mall locations, which is what this is. They average nine point four million dollars a year in sales, which is huge and great for the community. I think that's a positive thing. And that was according to their 2024 franchise disclosure documents. There are thirty-one hundred of them, actually, in North America, so that's pretty cool. So, then I looked up, well, what's an average ticket, so that we could kind of back into some numbers. So, I, my research found that there's a fifteen dollar and ninety-one cents average ticket per trip, which is cool, okay? So, if you take nine point three million dollars and you divide it by fifteen dollars and ninety-one cents, you get five hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight sales per year, and that's average. I mean, they said that they were expecting to do really well, but I'm just talking about average, so, so we're going to talk about kind of a minimal, sort of, what we should expect. Okay, cool. That's a lot of sales, and that's great tax revenue for Fishkill. Okay, so, over how many days? Well, we all know Chick-fil-A is closed on Sundays, right? So, you don't have three hundred and sixty-five days. You're going to be closed Sundays, Thanksgiving, and Christmas. So, you've got three hundred and sixty-five, minus fifty-two, minus two, you've got three hundred and eleven days. Okay, so, that's how many, now I'm going to back into how many transactions do we get a day, based on those numbers? So, if you take five hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight, and you divide it by three hundred and eleven days, you get one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine transactions per day. That's almost nineteen hundred transactions a day. Okay. So, then I was trying to figure out, okay, so you've got all these cars coming in, right? So, what's the average wait time in a Chick-fil-A queue line? So, I did the research, and it came out to about eight point five minutes. So, if you have one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine cars waiting eight minutes and twenty-nine seconds, you are going to get fifteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one minutes in that queue, which would translate to two hundred and sixty-six hours per day of waiting. So, now, I know that Chick-fil-A said they've got four hundred and forty-four linear feet in their drive-through queue. So, they said that would accommodate forty-four cars. So, I did that math. Forty-four into four hundred and forty-four means an average car is ten feet long. Now, maybe in Atlanta, everybody drives a spot car, but around here in New York, most of us drive SUVs or full-size cars. So, I looked up what the average length of a car is. That's fourteen point seven feet, which means that it's, with a four hundred and forty-four linear foot queue, you've got about thirty cars that'll fit, or fourteen less than proposed. Again, I don't understand the math, so I've just kind of, that's a concern for me. Okay. So, I'm a little shaky on whether that this corner can handle, the way we have it proposed, can handle that kind of traffic, particularly because we have to make a left to get into their queue. You have to actually make two lefts to get into their queue. So, I realize that we are moving the entranceway, what is that, east? And so, I figure along Merritt Boulevard, with that kind of extra length, maybe you could fit an additional ten, maybe twelve cars with that additional length. But I don't know if it's going to handle that number. So, I wanted to say, I fear that the traffic here will be detrimental to the existing locally-owned businesses in this plaza, because I believe that the sheer number of cars that we would anticipate coming in if they were average, and not if they thought they were going to do very well, but if they were just going to do an average Chick-fil-A, that you're going to have way too much traffic trying to make a left-hand turn, the way this sits. I think there are other ways that we configure this that might actually handle the drive-through traffic, maybe pushing that traffic to, from the south side, and only from the south side of the plaza might be one option. But I'm not an engineer, and I haven't done thirty-one hundred queues, I've never done any of this before, so, I don't know. I'm just telling you, but I just don't think that what we're talking about is actually conducive to the area we have. So, that's a big problem. The second thing I wanted to say was that I really appreciate that Chick-fil-A said they want to encourage approaches to their businesses as much as possible. I think that pretty much any small business you talk to would probably say the same thing. Squarely, I would like to also encourage approaches to my businesses just as much. So, does that mean that I can get directional signs? What about Dogtopia? What about Gymkhana? What about the hearing aid people in there? Like, what about all the other small businesses? And how is it because we're small local businesses that we don't get those things?
I have no problem with that, you know?
I'm just asking. Now, I understand the sign pollution thing, like, I completely get that. Like, you can't just have willy-nilly signs everywhere, and I understand the problem with that. But as our friends at Chick-fil-A pointed out while they were sitting at Starbucks, that it's super hard to see what's in this plaza. Now, you had, one of you gentlemen had said that it's hard to survive in that plaza. Now, we've been there for eight years, and we've done more than survive, we've thrived. We are named the best business in Duchess County by Duchess County EDC. We have multiple national awards, we have multiple tourism awards. So, we're not just some willy-nilly local business yahoos. Like, we work hard, and we thrive in this community, and we thrive in this shopping plaza. And we would like to continue to thrive, as would, my bet is, Dogtopia, Gymkhana, the new Farmers, and, I don't know, the new CBD place, can't remember, Farmers and something or other, and every other business that's in that plaza, and I'm sure the businesses coming in as well. I mean, we're all small businesses that are there, and I'm sure all of them want to survive. So, I think that we need to carefully consider what's happening, and the use of signage, and the way this is configured, because I, I also did a little more research, to tell you the truth, and I did find that there were multiple areas, multiple towns and cities that have had issues with traffic historically with Chick-fil-A's, including Honolulu, Charlotte, Santa Barbara, Fort Lauderdale-
Can you wrap it up? Give you another minute? Okay.
Sure. Brookfield and Fairfield. So, I'm just saying that we ought to consider how traffic is working here, and how signage is working here, and how lefts are being made, so that we don't have a bigger problem, not just for me as a business owner, but also considering that there is a whole fifty-five-plus community that's on the east side of this plaza, that need to be able to have access to things like first responders, fire departments, police departments, and the likes.
All right, thank you. You made some good points. Appreciate you, thank you. The traffic, those are, we leave that up to, you know, DOT and planning board, and people who are a lot more familiar with traffic studies. I don't have those, I don't have that skill set, so.
Fair, but since they closed the public-
But you brought up some good points about the signage?
Yep, and since they closed the public thing, you were the only people that I could have that conversation with, so now you know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Paige.
Anyone else, sir? No one else?
Can we ask, can we ask for you to maybe respond to that? Or is that, is that-
We usually do written responses.
Written response, okay. Okay, I appreciate that. And I do appreciate the research and the looking into and all of that, so.
Yeah.
I'll be interested to see the response.
Yep, we will. We'll respond to every comment. We met with Paige during the, and her brother during the planning board meeting in between the reviews, discussed a few other issues that we are looking into, which are site plan related. But as you noted, traffic is a planning board issue, a secret issue that will be assessed. I will say, related to the drive-through queues, there's a traffic impact study. The way it was just described to you, and the calculations that was just described to you, is not how the traffic study is conducted.
The traffic study was done, though, before the cannabis went in, and before the businesses that are about to come in are there, so everything is about to shift in that whole-
Oh, it's about, right, and so I wasn't, I wasn't talking about that. And those businesses coming in will have to evaluate traffic at that time. What I was going to mention was the amount of traffic that is going to be seen, the amount of drive-through that is being seen, that's all based on specific Chick-fil-A, specific data, and it's not done-
Times a day and so forth, right?
There's way too many variables based, doing it by transactions and ticket numbers, but certainly we'll respond in writing.
Okay.
Yeah, mostly, I think that what we're discussing now is more a planning board issue than a zoning board issue.
Right.
At this point.
Yeah, and the planning board has made well aware of those comments.
Okay. Well, I think we discussed that pretty good.
Sounds good, a good comment section.
Okay. I'd like to move on to the next topic, unless we have more.
Kathy, I'm sorry, go ahead, David, unless you want me to tell you.
Well, when you say move on to the next topic, you mean in regard to this applicant, or are you talking about move on to the next item on the agenda?
The next agenda item.
Right, so, I assume because secret has not been completed at the planning board, and because the-
This is still continuing, so.
Right.
We're going to have-
We're going to keep the public hearing open?
Yeah, we're going to keep the public hearing open.
Do a motion to keep the public hearing open, and if you want to put it on for the next, next month's meeting, that would be appropriate to put that in the motion. We'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
One favor. All right, thank you, we'll see you next month, okay? All right. All right. Now we have the, okay, next, is we're going to review, and I think we have to make a decision tonight.
That's correct.
On the timely signs. Okay, public hearing was opened and closed by the board in January 21st. We will review this application, and tonight we will make a decision on timely signs.
For, for clarity, it's not necessarily on timely signs, it's the application of the Fishkill Planning Board that relates to timely signs.
The challenge, yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Now, I'm not really sure where to go from here, because I know that we, we have some... Should we discuss it further? Or should we just make the vote?
Make a motion. Make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to take a vote on this. Not sure I have a motion, whether should we make the motion to.
Ron, why don't you like?
Well, yeah, I mean, it depends upon, I mean, anybody can make a motion, and the motion, if, if you're, if you're all, if you feel like you're ready to decide the matter, it would be either somebody making a motion to uphold the decision of the building inspector or a motion to reverse the, the holding of the building inspector. And then you could direct me to prepare a resolution consistent with whichever motion passes, and I can do that and prepare it for the chairman.
Based on the challenge from the planning board, I think I would like to make a motion to reverse the determination of the zoning administrator.
One second.
A second. All in favor? We don't have one in favor?
Want to do roll call vote?
Roll call?
Yes, ma'am.
John? Johnny?
No.
You don't want to challenge?
No.
Tim?
No.
Doug?
No.
Well, should we reverse the motion? Should we make a motion to?
No, we've got to finish the vote, right? You got a motion on the floor, we'd start a voting, and we can't stop it.
Yeah, but the motion didn't pass.
We didn't finish voting. Did you and Kathy vote?
Kathy, Kathy seconded the motion. The motion did not pass.
That's two yeses.
Okay, so there are two yeses. So it's three to two?
Three to two, so the motion does not pass.
So what happened today, everyone, a motion doesn't pass?
So now, you, somebody can make a, the opposite motion, you can make a, a motion to uphold the, the determination of the building inspector. In other words, to deny the application of the planning board and say, contrary to what the planning board says, the building inspector was correct. If there's a motion of that effect that's got three votes, then that's, then that's the decision of the board.
Motion, motion to uphold.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Johnny?
Johnny?
Aye.
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 Chuck passes.
I'm, well, the motion's passed, but I, you know.
The motion's passed, whatever.
Okay, so now you need to make a motion, somebody needs to make a motion to direct me to prepare a resolution, you know, for, you know, to that effect.
We'll make that motion.
Yeah. Okay.
Who's going to second?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
I can't, I'm absolutely against this. Absolutely.
Dada.
Okay, so do we, we had a motion, we had a motion to direct me to prepare the resolution. You know, it's an unusual situation, because you've got, the chairman is against it, but the chairman, you know, what you could do is.
They vehemently.
What, what, what you could do under these circumstances is direct me to prepare the resolution and present the written resolution for the board at the next meeting to, you know, to, to review. And, you know, on, on resolution at that time, you could ask, you could authorize or direct the chairman to sign, if there's a motion to that effect.
We just do that now?
Well.
We just voted to have you prepare the motion.
You, you did.
Resolution.
You did. But the motion is typically to, like, our, our standard practice is to authorize the chairman to sign. So you can, you could, you could embed that, you could authorize the chairman to sign it if he finds it consistent.
Normally, the way we make that motion.
That's, that's true. I mean, you could do that.
Okay, so that's the motion.
Okay, so the motion is to, is to direct me to prepare a resolution upholding the decision of the building inspector and to authorize the chairman to sign that. Okay, so you made that motion. Is there a second, and is it?
Second, aye. Johnny, second?
Okay. Okay, is there a vote? I mean, is there a vote on that motion?
Do we have a vote? Because I, I am.
Aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, two nays.
Three to two?
Okay.
We have nothing else in front of us, so I guess we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.[1787.37]